Amanda, any questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Okay, if you have the covenry interest, you could disclose that now or as we move along in the meeting. Consent agenda, we have twenty-two items on our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to have pulled or ask questions? Hugh?
Like five point one eight. And I don't know if it's worthwhile pulling five point one fifteen. That seems to been around and talked about for a long time, so I'm not quite sure whether there be anything more that we could do about insurance rates, but five point one eight for, please.
Okay, anyone else have anything they would like looked at? No, okay, so we will take a motion to accept the twenty items then. Five point one to seven, nine to fourteen, and sixteen to twenty-two. Jerry, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carrie, okay, five point one point eight. Hugh, speak to this.
Yeah, I know that it's maybe not exactly a huge thing in, in, we don't have merit railroads in Perth East, but we do have one going through South East Stowe. And some of the residents down there are having a hard time with CN getting them to do the required drainage that's necessary. So if we could support Southwest Oxford and their resolution.
Okay, so you will move that?
I will move that.
Okay, Darryl, will you second it? Okay, is there any more questions or comments on that item? All in favor? Carried. Okay, and then the other item you wanted told was five point one fifteen about the insurance rates?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. We can support that municipality. But insurance rate's been talked about for as long as I think everybody's been on council, so I'm not sure much is going to change, but we can at least send a letter of support, I guess.
So moved by Hugh, who wanted to second that motion? Man? So any more questions or comments anyone else would like to make? Jeremy? You're muted, Jeremy.
Ah, yeah, I think all the issues that they're asking to address here, like we have numbers one through, one through seven. Some of them have merit, some of them, to me, some of them don't make sense, or some of them can't happen. We have number four, increasing the catastrophic impairment default limit, two million dollars, and increase in third-party liability. Like, some of these, looking at it from an insurance perspective, don't make sense. I, I don't think that it's like, it's a product of the environment we're in with all of the insurance costs across the board, it's not just municipal insurance. I mean, two or three years ago, we took a huge decrease by something like eighty thousand dollars and saved that amount of money, now it's back up to where it was and it'll, it'll, it'll level out, it'll come down. I think the letter that's been written here needs a lot more research put into it before I'm willing to support this letter. That's all.
Okay, anyone else? Hugh?
I, I'd have no problem if the counselor, if he would have some ideas to, for a better letter, I'd have no problem with that.
I mean, the number six is, to me, extreme, is the biggest one. Compel the insurance industry to supply all necessary financial evidence, including premiums, claims, and deductible limit changes, which support its and municipally municipal arguments as to the fiscal impact of joint and several liability, like stuff like that, yeah, we've been after them for fifteen years, twenty years, maybe longer than I've been around about this kind of stuff. And if something's gonna happen with it, and what's gonna have to happen is the, the Ontario government, the federal government's gonna have to create some sort of slush fund for people that are injured when joint and several liability is completely eliminated, if it was, so I just don't think that anything that we're asking for here is, is really the, the solution, except for maybe number seven, to establish a working group to sort things out.
I'd be, I'd be happy if you just wanna have number seven, if you think that's one that's, will get the best traction. I'm quite happy with just forwarding that one.
Okay, it's the second or happy with that, too? Okay, so all in favor of that, that we're just going to forward number seven of the letter? Okay, carried. Okay, thank you. We have no delegations, we have no public meetings, we do have a public hearing. Council will now temporarily adjourned to sit as a committee of adjustment pursuant to section forty-five of the Planning Act. I now declare the virtual public hearing open. This virtual public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by McNabb Dunlop, care of Troy Dunlop, described as lot three fifty-three, plan three sixty-three, Milverton Ward, eleven George Street, Milverton. The purpose of this hearing is to give the committee and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the proposed application and receive their input and for the committee to make a decision on the application. All persons attending this hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Committee members may have questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are asked to withdraw comments on this application until all present have been given an opportunity to be heard. Due to COVID nineteen, public hearing procedures have been adjusted to adhere to preventive guidelines for holding electronic meetings. Any person who needs to be heard regarding this matter was asked to register prior to this meeting by the deadline of Monday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, at twelve noon with municipal clerk. Any person who wishes to receive written notice of the decision made by the Committee of Adjustment is asked to email their name and mailing address to the Secretary following this hearing. An appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal objecting to the decision made at this hearing may be filed with the Secretary Treasurer not later than February one, twenty twenty-one. No written notice, except as previously noted, will be given unless requested at this time. I will now call on Michelle Bae, Planner, to present the planning report and recommendations. Michelle, the floor is yours, and welcome to Perth East.
Thank you, through your worship, Mayor Egits. Good evening, and good evening, committee members. My name is Michelle Bae. I am Planner Consulting on behalf of the Township of Perth East. So the minor variance application before you is seeking relief from the zoning bylaw in order to construct a detached accessory structure in the form of a garage on the subject property, which will result in minor deficiencies from the zoning bylaw. So before outlining the variances, if I may be allowed, I will just share my screen. So as you can see, the subject property is located at the corner of George and William with frontage along George and is addressed municipally as George Street within the Milverton Ward. The property is designated residential within the Milverton official plan and it's zoned residential medium density. The detached garage is proposed to be located point seven meters from the main building, whereas the general provisions within the zoning bylaw for accessory structures note a requirement for a minimum of one point five meters from the main building. So the garage is also proposed to be located within a portion of the exterior side yard setback and the rear yard setback, which results in an exterior side yard setback of three point eight meters and a rear yard setback of three point one meters, whereas the residential medium density zone requires both an exterior side yard setback and rear yard setback of seven point five meters. So as you can see from this drawing, the proposed garage is proposed to be located at the southwest portion of the property, which limits the amount of development within the exterior side yard setback and is in line with the existing dwelling. In accordance with subsection forty-five, sub-one of the Planning Act, the review of a minor variance requires that the Committee of Adjustment apply for specific tests. These four tests are that the minor variance maintains the general intent and purpose of the official plan, the requested variance maintains the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, the application is minor in nature, and that the proposed development is desirable for the appropriate development or use of the subject property. Now, I won't go through the analysis of each of the tests in detail, as this has been provided for within the report, but I will note that the following conclusions made from planning staff's analysis, which are that the intent of the exterior side yard setback is to provide sufficient sightlines at street intersections, the intent of the rear yard setback is to provide appropriate separation from the property it backs onto and to provide for private enjoyment. While the requested variances do result in a reduced exterior side yard setback and reduced rear yard setback, the intent of providing these sightlines is sufficient at the intersection of William Street and George Street, as the proposed structure will be set back from the front lot line and outside of any daylight visibility triangles at this intersection. It should also be noted that while the accessory structure is proposed within a portion of the, the rear yard setback, the property is located at an intersection, providing very minimal privacy on what would be considered the property's rear yard. So through a review of the proposed application against the four tests, it is planning's opinion that the proposed development of an accessory structure is desirable and is appropriate for the use of the subject lands as a residential property. The proposed use of the subject lands is permitted within the official plan and the zoning bylaw. In addition, it has been demonstrated that there are existing residential properties within this area and within this medium density residential zone of similar corner lot configurations that also have buildings or structures located within exterior side yards and buildings or structures located within rear yard setbacks of this same scale. So public notice of this application was provided and no comments were received from the public. In addition, the application was circulated to various applicable agencies and no comments of concern were received from agencies either. So recommendation, recommendation today is for the approval of this minor variance application, subject to the conditions that were identified in the staff report. So that concludes my summary of this application, but should there be any questions, I'm available to take questions.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. No one registered to make a presentation or speak in opposition? No one registered to make a presentation or speak in support of applicant other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? No one registered as the applicant or the agent to make any comments to, in respect to this application? Are there any questions from committee members? No, everybody shaking their head, no? Okay, so committee will consider a motion regarding the application. So the motion that we have is that the Township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment received the report dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by the Planner and titled Minor Variance Application Number D thirteen, A thirteen, twenty twenty dash P E by Troy Dunlop, affecting lands described as land three sixty-three, lot three fifty-three, Milverton Ward, eleven George Street. And that the Perth East Committee of Adjustment approved Minor Variance Application, D thirteen, A thirteen, twenty twenty P E to permit a detached accessory structure garage at a minimum distance of point zero seven meters from the main building, where the zoning bylaw requires a minimum distance of one five meters from the main building to, to permit the detached accessory structure within the exterior side yard setback, which will result in a reduced exterior side yard setback of three point eight meters, whereas the zoning bylaw requires an exterior side yard setback of seven point five meters, and to permit the detached accessory structure within the year right, year, excuse me, rear yard setback, which will result in a reduced rear yard setback of three point one meters, whereas the zoning bylaw requires a rear yard setback of seven point five meters. And that the approval shall be subject to the following conditions, that the owner applicant complete construction of the proposed structure within one year from the date of decision to the satisfaction of the chief building official, ensuring that the approved variance applies only to the proposed detached accessory structure and which is to be situated as illustrated with, with the application, and that the owner slash applicant construct the proposed structure in the location as identified on the plans submitted with the application. So someone to move that, please? Moved by Jerry, second by Darryl. Is there any more questions or comments? Carried. I declare this virtual public hearing closed. Thank you, Michelle, for joining us. Okay, now we're going to move to planning and their first zoning bylaw amendment, Z six, twenty twenty, by Laura Kipper, and we have Pierre with us tonight to present. So Pierre, the floor is all yours.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As Mary, you guys mentioned, my name is Pierre Chauvin, I'm a partner at MHBC Planning, representing the consulting planner for the township. I'll be presenting the report that Evan Sogden prepared. And this application is made by the owner, Laura Kipper, for rezoning of the subject lands, which are missly addressed as seven zero zero three Raymond Drive, from future development, FD, to highway commercial, C three. Some of you may recall that this same property was subject to consent application. There were two applications related to these lands, B eighteen and nineteen slash twenty, both of which were approved by the land, by, by the county, sorry. And one of the conditions to satisfy the consent, since, were, was to rezone the property. This application was presented at a public meeting on November seventeenth of last year. There were no comments received from the public and oppositions to the application, the amendment, and no written or other comments from staff were received. It is our recommendation to approve the zoning bylaw as per the attached in, as Schedule C to our staff report. That's it for my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is there any questions on this application? See no questions? We do have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by the Consulting Planner entitled Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number Z sixteen, twenty twenty P E by Laura Kipper, and affecting lands particularly described as part of lot sixteen, concession seven, Morningside, as in R thirty-seven, sixty-six, fifty-three, except part one, forty-four, R dash sixteen oh six, and part two, forty-four, R dash fifty-four, eighteen, subject to an easement over part one, forty-four, R fifty-four, eighteen, in favor of part of lot sixteen, concession seven, part two, forty-four, R dash fifty-four, eighteen, Township of Perth East, or seven thousand and three, Raymond Drive, Millbank. And that council approved zoning bylaw amendment number two sixteen dash twenty twenty, attached herein as Schedule C. Moved by Jerem, Jeremy, second by Amanda. Is there any more questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Okay, and our next in is the application to sever by Baker Planning Group in Ellis. Pierre?
Yes, again, my mayor, members of council, this application is for a farm severance that was made by the owners, Mark and Clara Stedelman. They intend to convey the severed farm parcel to their daughter and son-in-law, Anita and Andrew Bell. I just want to clarify that because I think it was a little confusing in our report in terms of saying in the first, on third page of reports, and both severed retained parcels will be to the balls, so I just want to clarify that the severed parcel will be going to the balls, and the Stedelman's will continue to own the retained lands. These lands were subject to a previous application in the early nineties. And without getting into too many details, the lands merged on title, and hence they need, resulted in a need to come back and create the severance. Again, the total land holdings are approximately sixty-three hectares or about a hundred fifty-six acres with frontage online fifty-two. And the intent is to sever effectively as much as possible the lands in two, but following an existing drain, the, the re strain, which creates a natural divide on the property. As a result, the retained lands will satisfy or meet the minimum lot area requirements in the bylaw for farm parcel, whereas the severed lands will be just under that minimum requirement by three hectares for a total of thirty hectares. The consent or agricultural policies in the county official plan generally require that farm parcels be as, as large as possible to maintain some flexibility and stipulate that generally they should be forty hectares, albeit the, the zoning bylaw, as you know, does have lower lot area requirements for agricultural parcels. Because of the nature of the application, we asked the applicant to prepare an agricultural impact assessment to support the proposed severance and the quote-unquote undersized lot for the severed parcel. And based on our review, we conclude and agree with the, the conclusions of the applicant's agent, Caroline Baker, and her assessment in her agricultural impact assessment that the parcel size is as efficient size and flexible enough to accommodate a viable agricultural operation. We have, without getting into all the details, but it's spelled out in our report, we have looked at other parcels in the immediate area, and there are examples of smaller parcels, our farm parcels that are in immediate area that fall under the township's zoning bylaw requirements. And as well as the AIA that was prepared, identified from statistics Canada, certain lot sizes that throughout the county, there are a variety of lot sizes that are provided. And this particular thirty hectares is, is consistent with some of those lot sizes. I should note that the proposed undersized lot area of thirty hectares is also consistent in keeping with other municipalities zoning bylaws throughout the county, North Perth, South Perth, have a minimum lot area of thirty hectares, as well as West Perth has a minimum lot area of twenty-two hectares. So we, I, it is our recommendation that council receive this report and that you support and the recommendation with the number of conditions, the seven conditions attached to our report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Pierre. Questions, Darryl?
Oh, good, thanks for saying that, Pierre. West Perth is smaller. Rhonda, you recall, is that because their concessions were shorter or something? Do you remember? In West Perth, they, they have the twenty-two hectare minimal lot, Pierre, can you?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I don't know the, the history behind that.
There was a reason, and I forget what, you recall, Rhonda, I think it came maybe months before I was involved when we started this differences. Yeah, West Perth is different on the minimal lot size, and, yeah.
And I think that was up to the councils of the day when they decided. Yes, I believe, like years ago, you could sever a house in, in Fullerton Township, and you could sever a house in Hibbert Township, and you couldn't in Ellis Township. So I think that was their council of the day's decision. And when we do our official plan, that we're all the same acreage when they, when they change, so.
Planning in particular, we gotta get to the bottom of this, and we can save everybody time, and, I mean, just, from this. Thanks, Pierre.
Okay, anyone else with questions on this? See no questions? We do have a resolution that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report entitled Application for Consent to Sever, Number B forty-five dash twenty, by Baker Planning Group, affected lands described as lot fifteen, concession fourteen, Ellis, part of lot fourteen and fifteen, concession thirteen, and parts one and two, forty-four, R dash twenty-nine, oh two, subject to the interests of the municipality, Township of Perth East, fifty-three oh seven, and fifty-three thirty-nine, Road one thirty, dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by the Consulting Planner to Perth County for information. And that the Council of the Township of Perth East recommends that the, that the County of Perth Land Division Committee approve the application for consent to sever, Number B forty-five slash twenty, for the lands described as lot fifteen, concession fourteen, Ellis, part of lot fourteen and fifteen, concession thirteen, and parts of one and two, forty-four, R twenty-nine, oh two, subject to the interests of the municipality, Township of Perth East, fifty-three oh seven, and fifty-three thirty-nine, Road one thirty, subject to the following conditions, and we have seven conditions, and I'm gonna give you the condensed version. So number one is that all financial requirements have been met, number two, that the certificate is stamped by the county within one year of the date of the decision, number three, that Perth East received that these restrictive agreement number R three four four two three nine agreement restricting any further severances of land from the property addresses fifty-three oh seven have been lifted from the title pursuant to bylaw number forty-one, twenty twenty. Number four, that the Township of Perth East, that an amendment to the Township zoning bylaw be adopted to apply a site-specific amendment to the severed lot to recognize a deficient lot area and to permit a single detached dwelling, notwithstanding deficiency in lot area. Number five, that amendment to the Perth East zoning amendment, zoning bylaw has been adopted to restrict the construction of a new farm residence on a proposed severed lot until such time that subsequent construction of farm-related buildings or structures be completed or substantially completed, which are required to carry out the proposed use. The municipal drains in the area will be reviewed and updated, and number seven, that the county be provided with a description that's consistent with the application and equal to the required for registration of the deed and transfer. Mover for those? Moved by Darryl, second by Amanda. Is there any more questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Pierre.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to our next item, Consent to Sever by Ross Alexander McTavish, and we have Louisa joining us for that. Here she is.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, your worship, members of council. Yes, my name is Louisa Vacondio, I work for MHBC Planning, we are the consulting planners that have been retained by Perth County to review development applications. This, I'll provide a brief overview of this application, consent application B forty-eight twenty, by, submitted by Ross Alexander McTavish. The subject property in question is four five seven five, line seventy-two. The purpose of this application is the applicants, the owners of the subject property, David Ross McTavish and Judith Lynn Wyatt have applied for this consent application to to convey a lot addition of a portion of their property addressed as four, five, seven, five, line seventy-two to the adjacent property addressed as four, six, one, nine, line seventy-two. The purpose of this proposed lot addition conveyance is to provide this additional land to the residential lot to accommodate the construction of a geothermal system to service this existing residential dwelling on that lot. There's no further development beyond the geothermal system proposed as part of this application. The portion of land that is to be added to four, six, one, nine, line seventy-two is just over one thousand five hundred meters square or zero point three seven acres. It's a rectangular piece of land. It's approximately sixteen point seven six meters wide and ninety meters deep. The applicants have provided documentation from the installer for the geothermal system to support this request that is contained in schedule D of this of this report, which identifies that approximately the area that is supposed to be added is the approximate area that is needed to accommodate this system. The proposed consent application is in line with the provincial policies, the county policies and the zoning bylaw in effect. This application has been circulated internally to several agencies for comment. GRCA has provided comments stating that given that this piece of land that is proposed to be conveyed is within the flood plain, the proposed geothermal system will require a permit from the GRCA in order to be constructed, but that they have no objection to this proposed consent application. So that is a summary of this application. Should there be any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Louisa? Daryl?
Yeah, go again there. What is the severance size of this lot going to be? What was the size?
Sure. Why don't I actually share my screen here and show you the severance sketch? That might help.
Sure.
Can we all see?
Yes.
So the parcel that is to be severed is right here. So it's just over fifteen hundred meters squared. So zero point three seven acres. So that would be from this larger farm parcel and added to the resident.
Okay, Daryl?
Saying acres, you mean hectares.
Sorry. One thousand five hundred meters squared, zero point three seven acres.
Zero point what?
Three seven acres.
Exactly.
Third of an acre, correct?
Yes.
That's bigger than a third of an acre.
That little narrow strip?
Oh, oh, the narrow strip. Yes, that's the one existing. I mean, the property.
Oh, the property itself. The property itself is the residential property.
Yes.
The residential property is currently is currently, so it would be approximately four point two six acres in total.
Okay, Daryl?
No, I'm just going to bring to council here. Rhonda, chime in here too, being I'm off the land division right now. But these are getting fast-tracked now, Rhonda. Maybe you can chime in there, but we have to do our due diligence a little more. And this is where it's confusing. Again, is there any reason why that ground loop can't be put on the front lawn? I see the weeping bed showed here, but yet the weeping bed isn't going to take that whole piece of property in the wedge of the two roads. So I'm just wondering why we can't put the ground loop out there. Like, these properties are getting so big. Rhonda, you know, the arguments we've had in debates, and here we are, we're almost pushing five acres. Or whatever it was, and it's interesting. And on the south side too, if you would, south, west side. I'm just wondering why that property line isn't sucked up on the north side of that ditch that's there. It's just, it's making them much bigger than they need to. And being there's a farm behind, I would like to see that pitch with the farm. So that way it's effortless for him to do work in when it come in regards to drainage. I just want to see what I left behind. Is my thoughts. If anybody else has anything to say here. I'll leave the floor. It is quite big, and I'm just curious why we can't keep that ground loop on the lawn. It's interesting. Off the hop, you know, I struggled myself. Sometimes I thought we should be leaving the buildings. Now here we are, holy smoke, these things have got paid. So I'm just a little concerned why that ground loop can't be left on the front lawn. Other than that, in the ditch. Thank you.
Okay. Can you put us all back, Louisa, please?
Yeah, of course. Through you, Mary, I gets to address councillor Hurlick's comment. There is a bit, quite a bit of explanation in the report itself, so I'll sort of try to summarize here a little bit more, provide a little bit more clarity to the situation. So our understanding, so based on direction from the installer for the geothermal system, the applicant has relayed to us that they have identified that to be the more optimal location, given the moisture in the ground and that being more optimal for the installation of that system. Furthermore, the furnace in the dwelling is located on that eastern portion of the dwelling. So providing the ground loop location on that eastern side would be more seamless to connect to the furnace and the dwelling and to provide that the geothermal, the heating. As you can see on the sketch here, it's a little bit small, but the driveway is on the west side. So were the geothermal system located on that west side, it would have to go underneath that driveway and underneath the house, right, in order to access that furnace location. So it is a more optimal location to be located on that eastern portion. That being said, like, it's also that piece of land there, we can see through, you know, aerial imagery that it hasn't been farmed, and it's currently just sort of, it's sitting there. It's not been cultivated, so it really is a more optimal location. I do understand that that concern that it is existing a large, it is an existing larger lot and that we'd be adding more, but really it is the more optimal location based on information that we have been provided by the installer and the applicant.
Okay, Daryl?
Yeah, I get what you're going. Now, these are intended to be severances, not severances with extras because I want a ground loop. We've been flexible. If there is existing ground loops, we try and fit them in the best we can, but to be giving direction and adding outside, for me, it's what Perth County Council and the clarity, you know, I know this isn't something province wants to see. We have endless lots that could be severed, a house put on them, and we can't do it. Now here we are giving extra dirt because, oh, I want a ground loop. And I'm just so confused on this at this point. I'm a little frustrated actually because the debate isn't happening anymore the way it should. This is something new, and I know I'm not even on the land division now. It's interesting for sure. So I, we could support this in principle. I would like to see that that self-boundary line put on the other side of the ditch. I would like to see that on an angle and put the ditch behind with the farm and not leave it with a separate parcel of the house. We can tighten that up on the south side of that shed and leave that behind for the farm. So that will can work with that, I mean, we do, after it works. And this is where we struggle now when the county used to do, be so. It's a little weird. Some of these just seem to be slipping through the cracks, I find, and they've got so big. I have concerns with that ground loop, so. Interesting. Rhonda, do you have anything to say? You're the specialist, not me.
I wouldn't say I'm the specialist, but I hear what you're saying, Daryl, like, we are trying to shrink these properties. And I guess the other argument sometimes they've used at county council is that the people who want to put these ground in can lease the land from the other person too. They don't necessarily have to own it. I think that's starting to be looked at too a little bit more, so. Does anyone else have any questions? To add, Jerry?
Yeah, to councillor Hurlick's point, of course. This one, this property is very unique. It sits at the corner there, one thirty-one seventy-two. All that area at the front has been grass forever. And so that property line, I know sometimes we'll see an aerial photo and the red lines. I'm actually looking at age two oh eight of the report on their agenda. Sometimes those red lines can be inaccurate. So how accurate is that south property line there? It does seem a little strange that it is including that piece of the ditch. So my question, I guess, is how accurate is that that south line?
Through you, Mary, your worship, Mary, I guess. My, to my understanding, it is fairly accurate. It is something that could be potentially adjusted. And to address councillor Hurlick's previous point that he'd like to see, you know, that ditch sort of added to the farm lot. This application was originally submitted, actually, with that, that yellow piece actually extending all the way down. We, in discussions with the applicant, we actually provided a few scenarios. One of them being that they could reduce it to be what is currently proposed. Or alternatively, that we could sort of do more of a land swap kind of option, which would raise that bring that southern property line further up to include the ditch on the farm parcel in exchange for the land for the ground loop. Ultimately, the applicant wanted to proceed with this option, and that's what we're presenting at this point. That being said, council can use their discretion to make a recommendation.
Okay, Daryl?
Yeah, we definitely need to make sure we're not into bartering and such too much here. I think it was supposed to be as small as we can. And I need to see that ditch included with the farm on the south side, you know. If the, it's too big and we can run on an angle. We've done it lots in Chicago. And we just, I want to see that ditch left with the farm on the north side of the property line and moved to the north side. And unfortunately, in my, in my, in my, you know, experience, two years in this, it's a very good move, interesting. I would be happy to see that, I'm sure. Our staff as well, so. That's where we're at, so unfortunately, I can accept it in its form that's presented. But I need to see, to see some more questions from the county on that ground loop that we should be bargaining with. It's just slipping through the cracks, you know, your spots. They want a loop, but maybe if they can't put it on a front lawn, we can't get any extra parcels, extra farmland because they want a ground loop. It just isn't what I know of from land division. I'm sure Rhonda sees where I'm bouncing around here a little bit, but I just don't, I think it's more unfair to what I'm asking, so. I wouldn't accept it.
Okay, Jeremy?
A good old mute button again. I think Louisa showed us everything we needed to see here, like the, that chunk of land is not being farmed now. I pull up a Google image of what the land looks like now, map data twenty twenty-one in Google, and that, that's green grass right now. I don't know where else you'd put a ground loop on that property because you're not going to plumb it underneath a driveway. I think that's the only option for it here. I think it makes sense. That property's been there for, at least, that house has been there for over thirty years. I think for a new heating system, I think it makes sense to me. I think what Louisa is telling us here makes sense to me, and I'm willing to support.
I have one more question, Nandero, another one. So the part in red, is it zoned agricultural now that they wish, correct?
Through you, Mary, I guess. Yes, it is zoned agricultural as well as the portion of the lot, like, the residential lot is also zoned agricultural.
Okay. Daryl?
And respectfully, we do trim lawn off. We have multiple kinds of people want bigger yards and such that aren't developed for twenty years. And we know it's going to be active field. We're asking for just too much here. You're trying to essentially mistake lots, not seeing that's what they are doing here. You've been squaring that up. On the side of the house, it's just too big, and then you move that lot line on, on, it needs to be left with the farm. It's a great ditch that is involved in the farming. I don't want to see. It's just a headache if the wrong person gets in that house and they need to do work on that ditch on the dock. You know, it's just, these are the issues we have to be careful. And for me, I'm supporting it, and but we'll go from there.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments they wish to make? So we can do what you wish. We can approve with the eight, nine conditions. We can add a condition that we would like to see it made smaller. We can defer. There's several options. So who wants to move what? Jerry?
I'd like to move the recommendation in its entirety that we have in front of us.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that? Jeremy? Okay, so the recommendation is that the council of the township of Perth East receive the report entitled application for consent to sever number B forty-eight dash twenty by Ross Alexander McTavish affecting lands described as lot seven concession six, Mornington Ward forty-five seventy-five, line seventy-two Township of Perth East dated January twenty, excuse me, January twelve, twenty twenty-one, prepared by MHBC Planning Consulting Planner on behalf of the county of Perth for information. The council recommends that the county of Perth Land Division Committee approve the application for consent to sever B forty-eight slash twenty affecting lands as described as lot seven concession six, Mornington Ward forty-five seventy-five, line seventy-two Township of Perth East subject to the following conditions, and there are nine conditions, and I'll summarize them. But number one, all financial requirements have been met. Number two, taxes have been paid in full. Number three, confirmation received from solicitor that the certificate of the official will be scanned and attached to electronic registration of the transfer. Number four, council has provided with a description that is consistent with the application and equal to that required for registration of the deed slash transfer. Number five, that the sign has been put up and posted and returned. Number six, the township of Perth East say that the municipal drains have been reviewed and then updated. Number seven, that the reference plan be prepared by a licensed Ontario land surveyor to the satisfaction of the county of Perth. Number eight, the owner of forty-five seventy-five, line seventy-two conveys the fifteen hundred point, fifteen hundred and eight point eight meter squared or point zero three seven acre portion of the property to the owner of forty-six nineteen, line seventy-two by way of a deed or transfer to the satisfaction of the county of Perth. And then, and number nine, and undertaken from the solicitor stating that the severed parcel be added to forty-six nineteen, line seventy-two will be sold to a buyer to the satisfaction of the county of Perth. So that's been moved by Jerry, second by Jeremy. Is there any more questions or comments? Daryl?
And I'll just bring to councils attention the importance that I feel as a farmer and experience with the land division committee that that ditch needs to be left with the farm. it needs to be left with the farm. The property line needs to be moved to the north side of that ditch. It's sloppy business to be leaving that behind. The farmer needs to do work and have to work through the potential owner of that. We have a duty, but yes, it was we obviously had that.
Yep, thanks, Daryl. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Defeated? It was a tie. Okay? Would anyone else like to? Do anything else with this? Daryl?
We accept with an amendment that the property line gets adjusted to the north side of the ditch. And for review of county council land division with three cards to add, asking for the ground loop. If it's installed, we've heard from this before. Where we start taking, okay, can I do this? Can I do this? More than it's not existing, they're just manifestive. And more fluid and commodity for Astro. So for me, I'll approve with they move the north side of the ditch on the south side, if you would. And that is reviewed extensively on land division's opinion on the request for the land for the heat loop.
Yeah, I have in trouble here and you, Daryl, but I think what you these nine conditions plus another condition, which would be that the south boundary be moved? Have the ditch included with to the farm, is that
Yes, yes.
And and that, and then what do you want done with the loop?
It's reviewed by Perth County Land Division extensively. We're giving extra land for something that isn't there upon a request. We we don't do that.
I'm a little confused.
See what I'm saying, Rhonda? We we've never, we give ground loops because they're already installed.
Yep.
We don't add extra land because, oh, I want them on loop. We don't do that. We're at four, four acres more already.
Well, in essence, you're saying that you you don't want to approve the addition land being added to the lot. Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
So then you don't want to approve these seven conditions. You
No.
You want
The ground loop removed.
You want the the boundary line moved so the ditch is included with the farm and you want the ground loop to be included in the property that already exists there?
Yes, or amount of it all.
Okay, so Daryl's wanting to move that. Do we have a second or for that? Does everyone understand that? So in an essence, what Daryl wants to do is not approve what's before us. He wants them to move the boundary on the south end of the property so the ditch stays with the farm and he, I guess he wanted to deny.
Yes, at this point, the request for the ground loop. Not before.
I have a question, Rhonda. About the 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 motion. So we're requesting to deny and to take property away from somebody that was given the property X amount of years ago.
Well.
That, yeah, that's not something we can do.
No, I I'm I agree with you, Jeremy. I think what we do is if you want to new motion, Daryl, would be to deny the application. And and then the applicant would have to go back. I don't, I don't think we can put in the application or we can deny it and say that they want to move it. We want to move the boundary line because Jeremy's correct. That boundary line line was set years and years ago. Anyone else have some words of wisdom here, Amanda?
Um, I would support the mo, the first point of the motion, just not the second.
To deny the application?
Uh, sorry, uh, yeah, to deny the application. If the back, if the ditch was included with the farm property, but I guess that's basically what we're talking about.
Right. I think what we have to deal with what we have today, we can't be asking them to move the move the boundaries. So we have to deal with what what they're what they're applying for.
I guess, I guess I have a question. So in that case, uh, like what's presented before us, so say if we approved it and, you know, there is an issue with the ditch. How does the farmer, how does that, what would be the process? Like, do we have situations where that is current, like currently? How does that happen? Like, how did? How does that get handled?
I don't think we can go back and approve it because we've just voted against it. We've, we voted against what the recommendation was. Right?
Right, so I, sorry, I should rephrase. What I'm trying to get a sense of is in the event we were to get a similar application and the ditch wasn't with the farm property, what sort of the the ramifications to the farmer in a situation like that? Because that's try, that's what I'm trying to understand. I don't know if there's anyone that can speak to that or not from an agricultural point of view.
Wes, thank you.
You're going to separate grains, so there would be no ramifications. And if there was any work to be done, it would be done with this degree.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so does anyone wish to do anything with this? I don't think, Daryl, we can ask them to move move the boundary because we have to go with what the applicant applicant is and the application is to this piece of property to their property, right? And so we've had, we voted that down. And I don't believe that we can make a motion to ask them to to do that. So someone help me here with the process. So we voted it down. They can still take it to land division, can they not? They just don't have our consent. Right? And Ashley's shaking her head, yes. Correct? So even though Perth East Council does not agree, they can still go to land division. And they can still ask land division, and it's up to land division then to decide whether or not to let it go through or defer it and ask them to bring it back. Is that correct? Teresa and and yeah, Pierre, can, do you want to speak on this, too? Just so counsel?
Yeah, just to clarify, Madam Mayor, that what you, how you explain it is correct. Our recommendation is is what it is, and that won't change. But in our reporting to Land Division Committee, obviously, we attach council's recommendation, so they will know that you have not supported it. And it'll allow, it'll be up to Land Division Committee to decide then, like you said, either to approve it, deny it, or defer it.
Right. Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay, everybody's nodding their head. Right, all right, we'll let land vision. They all know that that Perth East Council did not recommend it. So we'll let land division and the county deal with it from here. Right, so Daryl had a part motion on the floor. Do you wish to proceed with that, Daryl, or do you wish to withdraw it?
I'll withdraw it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any more questions, Jeremy?
Does land division not need some sort of direction from us? So all we've done here is not approved it. We haven't done, we haven't given them any direction at this point.
We haven't given them any direction, but they know that we don't support what was proposed. Right, so we don't have any motion. So unless you want to send some kind of a motion to them, they'll just know that we didn't support what was here. Okay, anyone else want to do anything? If not, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on. Thanks, Louisa. Okay, we'll go to, we don't have anything from the CIO, and the next item of business is the clerk, so maintenance and repair. So I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Okay, nothing further to add to this report, but can answer any questions?
Okay, is there any questions on that report? Seeing none, we do have a motion that the council, the township of Perth East appoint Dietrich Engineering Limited to prepare an engineer's report under section seventy-eight of the Drainage Act for the May Borough, number four, municipal drain part lot one concession thirteen Morningside Ward Township of Perth East in the County of Perth. We have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Hugh, second by Jerry. Is there any more questions? All in favor? Harried. Okay, we have nothing from finance, nothing from public works, nothing from building, nothing from, oh, sorry, we do have something. So we move to Recreation and Community Services. The first item is eight point seven point one, then Newton Park Washrooms. Becky, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, so as council is aware, in the twenty twenty budget that we prepared, the Newton Park Washrooms and Pavilion was included for renovations for seventy-five thousand dollars. We estimate the Washington renovations would cost fifty thousand dollars. But the submissions came in above the fifty dollar, fifty thousand dollars, so the CIO cannot approve that. We require council's approval. So we're asking for approval of the fifty-six, five hundred and ten plus tax and be awarded to JK Construction and that we get pre-budget approval for this project for twenty twenty-one.
Hey, any questions for Becky? See no questions. We have a motion that the council Oh, Daryl, sorry. You just moved around on my screen. You were in my right, now you're on my left. Go ahead, Daryl.
I'm expecting we're going to see a bit of this, of people who thought where prices were and where they're heading. Oh, things have gotten expensive. It's getting hard for some contractors to keep solid prices any amount of time. So I I think we just but things have changed and things are getting pricey. It's getting really strange actually if you're a contractor to price things. So I think we better stay on par and do it. Thanks.
Any other questions, Jeremy? That mute button again.
Yeah, that darned. I was going to move the recommendation.
Okay, so moved by Jeremy. Do we have a second or? Daryl? The council township of Perth East received the Newton Park Washrooms renovations report prepared by the Recreation and Community Services Manager dated January twelve, twenty twenty-one for information. And that council awards a renovation of the Newton Park Washroom to JK Construction an amount of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars plus tax. And the council grant pre-budget approval for the Newton Washroom and Pavilion renovation project. So we have that moved and seconded. Is there any more questions or comments? All in favor? Harried. Okay, so next item is eight point seven point two, and that is the ice usage at the perk. Becky?
Thank you. Um, so I guess today has changed a number of things with the announcement from the province. The stay-home order could be in effect as long as February the eleventh now. So that certainly does put an impact on if where where we will come out on after that. And at this point, I would recommend to council that you look to take out the ice.
Questions, comments? Daryl?
It's funny, I sent emails on this. And I had my concerns and Teresa kindly brought me up to speed pretty quick, but it is, and it's quite interesting. It's, yeah, she got back to me, goes, there's a package. So no, I think at this point, it's a mess. I hate this. Our children are suffering. It's confusing. And I think, yes, that's
Okay, anyone else? Jerry? You unmuted there. I didn't know if you wanted to say something.
Well, everybody's connection is mine or it's everyone's, but I didn't hear nothing that Daryl said there.
Oh, sorry. I think Daryl, Daryl was Daryl sent Teresa and I an email here a couple of days ago and and was asking about the cost of the ice. And he said, it's not nice. Our kids are all suffering, everyone's suffering, but there's nothing we can do about this. But anyway, that's how this report kind of came about. And and then yesterday, the as Becky said, the government has changed the rules of what we can and can't do. So I think Daryl was just speaking in support. So Jerry?
So help me here, the the recommendation just says to receive for information, but we're adding a line to remove the ice at this time?
If that's what council wishes to do. Jeremy?
Um, can I have some clarification on what the government said today? Like Becky, the way that you worded it, you said that we might be in lockdown until February twelfth. Does that mean that we are? Or what what's the situation here?
The the statement that was said is that will be in effect until at least February the eleventh. Um, a- after that, we don't know whether or not we'll come out in red or stay in black or gray, whatever. So I think the big thing is 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 not knowing where we're going to come out of this in another twenty-eight days. And to have the ice sit there unused is I don't know if that's the most effective way.
So what's it costing us? Is it costing us eight thousand bucks a month to leave it in there? Is that?
No, that's, so it costs on average eight thousand dollars more with ice in than with ice out in hydro. So but effectively, right now, everything is turned down, so we're turned up, turned up. So we're not using, we're not using, I don't know what we're using right now. Because we've turned up the slab temperatures, we're not using hot water, we're not using lights and all that. So that eight thousand that we're, would normally be spending right now, we're not spending. But because I don't have any invoices in yet, I don't know what that amount is at this point.
So it's very likely less than that?
Yeah, it should very well be less than eight thousand dollars. Also, less use on the water, less use on staffing and that sort of thing. But then when we come back, if we come back, and I would assume that if we would come out of this into red, that's still only going to allow us to have eighteen to twenty-three hours of ice rental. Because the recreation groups rec hockey can't play in red. It's only minor hockey, Lakers, figure skating. Lakers have already indicated that they won't come back if we're back in red. Minor Hockey says they'll go, but they're limited to ten players. So whether that's a true and hard, yes, we will go. I don't know. So then we're back up, we're back in renting eighteen to twenty-four hours of ice a week. Our 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 cost will then again increase because we're using lights, we're using staff time and all that. But our revenues aren't going to be back up the way they were either compared to when we're, when we were renting the ice for forty, forty-five hours a week. So we're going to have almost the same costs in renting out half the time. If we come back in red. And I have no idea. So at this point, it's just a best guess of the way the world has been going. Saint Mary's, Saint Mary's tonight was going to council and recommending the same thing. I don't know the others, yeah.
Hey, Jeremy?
Rhonda Fisher. What was the amount of the money the government gave us for COVID relief?
Okay, there's two phases for the COVID grant, ones for 2020 and ones for 2021. We budgeted for approximately 156,000 to go forward into 2021 budget. If you look at your packages, I know you probably haven't, they went out today, but we've got that grant included and we've got it netted out to our net costs for COVID. And of course, we're doing our best estimate based on, we don't know what what the situation is going to be in the months to come. We've got it ended out to zero now and that has not included lockdown situation. It's included our red situation. Does that help?
Okay, any other questions? So I guess the question is, do we want to take the ice out now? Or do we want to wait? Jeremy?
I'm prepared to move the recommendation as it sits. I'm not ready to take the ice out. We've got a month to sit here and wait. If it costs us four, five, 6,000 bucks while we wait and see, I'm totally comfortable with that. So I will move the recommendation as it is now.
Okay, do we have a secondaire? Jerry? Okay, so the recommendation is that the Council of the Township of Perth East received the ice usage report prepared by the Recreation and Community Service Manager dated January 12, 2021 for information. Any more questions? All in favor? Opposed? Feeded. Okay, someone else like to make another motion? Amanda?
I'd like to make a motion that we take the ice out.
Effective tomorrow? Is that when you'd start it, Becky, or when would it start?
Whenever, whenever it's possible.
We would turn it off tomorrow.
Okay, do we have a secondaire for that? Darryl? Anyone want to comment or question? Jeremy?
I I think I said my piece, but I and and Darryl said part of it for me too, where, you know, we do have people that need these recreation facilities. Yeah, we can't use it for a month, but we could still use it for a month or two months afterwards. If we come out in orange, if we come out in red, could come out in green. We don't, we don't know that for sure. So I'm not prepared to shut the lights off in there already when it's not costing us that much money at all. And we're in a much better financial situation than most other municipalities already. We've been given the money by by the government for things exactly like this, whether we've netted out or not. There's still, we're still in a much better financial position right now than a lot of others. And I think we should be supporting our constituents by leaving the ice in. And you know, if we have to take it out February, February 12th, because we're still in red or gray, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the worst $6,000 we've ever spent, so.
Okay, anyone else? So Amanda?
I'll just sort of speak to this. I think I mean, we don't know what's going to happen. I think that's the tricky thing, the it's unpredictable and certainly I would love to see it stay in. But it just sounds like from Becky's report, you know, we have some groups that would go participate and use the ice again and others that wouldn't. So it tells me that it's just not something that me personally, that I just don't think that we can support. I understand the optics of of, you know, trying to support our constituents because this is so hard for everybody. But I just that I just wanted to provide some comment to the motion that I moved.
Okay. Anyone else? So Amanda's motion is to remove the ice. All in favor? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay. All right, then we'll move to correspondence. We have one item under correspondence. We have a letter from Betty Wolf in Shakespeare about the street lighting. Maybe Wes can speak to this. Give us a little insight.
So this is a section of street from from Miller up to North Hill Drive. And it's approximately 90 to 100 meters where there is no streetlights. That being said, this is not the only location that we have in Perth East. I tried getting a price for streetlights and I didn't get that done. I was hoping to have something for to give to council tonight, but I don't.
Okay. Wes, so what would you like to do with this? Darryl?
Is there any kind of net study we can do on this? Well, just to confirm a little more, what what should we do here? Is there something in place we can do? I don't know. They're definitely saying it's not satisfactory. Is there something we can offer them for a study?
Well, we can send it back to staff and let Wes and his his crew look at it and see what can be done and find the cost of a streetlights, I guess. And then they can bring it back and council can decide how they want to proceed.
Yeah, just some methodology for what was used like your statement. That's what we can do. If I could just see something, oh, thank you.
Okay, so someone want to make that a motion that we send it, ask staff or report, moved by Hugh? Second by Amanda? All in favor? Carried. Okay, we will move on to committee reports. My meeting log is there. Is there any questions on where I've been or what I did for the month of December? No questions? Do we have any council reports? Darryl?
Yeah, so I'll just bring council up to speed here. So I'm speaking on the health unit again. I sat on the first year, year off. I'm back on again. So we had our first meeting last Friday. And yeah, it's definitely some interesting times around COVID. Yeah, we had conversation. We've had some big outbreaks and if you look on the paper, it looks bad. But that being said, here on Perth Health Unit has done an above average job of per capita basis testing. So as much as they had their zones and everything, the bigger centers, they don't know where necessarily. There is confusion. It's frustrating. Yeah, I had brought up the fact that I went down to Costco a couple of days after this lockdown and there's 550 cars in the park and probably even people in one building. It's a herd of animals going in and out, of course, people. So it's so frustrating, so confusing. Health unit is doing what they can, but there's unanswered questions, I believe. So it's it's unique times. We're not alone. We have a very honest group of citizens within Perth East who who come forward and were willing to be tested. And yeah, it's interesting. We know where it's at in depth. It's definitely interesting.
Okay, anyone else have any reports they wish to give? Seeing none, then we need a motion to accept my meeting log and Darryl's report. Moved by Jeremy, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. Okay, so we do have some bylaws. We have two bylaws to be read at first, second, third, and final time. So we have a bylaw number 216 dash 2020 to amend by law 301999 for 7,003 Raymond Drive in Millbank, and that pertained to 8.1.1 on their agenda. And the other bylaw is 225 dash 2020 to repel by law 209 2020 which amends by law 301999 for lands described as concession 13 lot 34 and part lot 33 Ellis Ward. We have a mover and a secondaire for those. Bylaws. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. Okay, so we do not need closed session. Do we have any notice of motions? Any new business? Nope, okay, any announcements? Nope, okay, then we just have the confirmatory bylaw. Someone would like to move that bylaw? Nobody? Okay, moved by Jerry, second by Amanda, all in favor? Carried and a motion to adjourn at 8:27. Moved by Amanda, second by Darryl, all in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. We are moving into some interesting times. I hope everyone stays safe and take care of yourselves. So we'll all see you again the next time on the screen. Thanks and good night. Oh, my word.